Oh, no.
Good time, Bill.
We're good?
Um, let me ask.
Mr. Pippen?
Well, I'd like to have thirty minutes, but then we give you three. Here, what I'm saying is kind of some of it, what he had to say, you people, we, we elect you people into this place to make decisions for us, good decisions, not decisions that you think's best for us. You, we want you to listen to us. And that's the biggest problem I see. It's just like in here, this marijuana thing. You guys don't even know what people want. You just put this in there and are gonna pass this without even knowing what the people of this town want. And I don't know, you just need to start listening to us. That's what I say. That's all I ask. Terry, I'm thinking.
Terry Howard?
No, well, no, I'm sorry. There's Pastor Smith, he's gonna be speaking on the same, on the same subject.
Okay, John?
Thank you for the time. I just wanted to say again, thank you always for you guys' service. I know it's a tough job and you catch it from a mirror direction. In response to this moratorium, I'm very much in favor of it and there's two reasons for it. Today I was with a lady that had the marijuana shop passed, would have been the closest resident to the shop. Her house would have been within sight of it. And she didn't get to vote on it because she wasn't in the city limits of the town. The county has made its decision. And so in a county where that decision had been made, then she was okay. But she would have lost that privilege and her kids would have had to grown up with problems that come with that kind of shop coming to any community. Our town did speak almost two to one that we did not want. So I think we have heard from the town and I hope that you'll proceed with this. Because two to one, best I can tell, is a landslide. Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
Thank you, John.
After that, we have Mark Eckert.
Mr. Eckert.
Board, mayor, speaking about the same issue. What would be the main reasoning as board would consider a moratorium that would mirror the county's 100-year law?
Probably because it was brought before the board.
Things that are us. Now would be the reasonings to, to mirror what the county wants to do.
I, I don't have reasons.
So there's no reason for you guys to mirror up the county?
It's pretty simple. I mean, and if you don't wait till it comes up on the agenda, I'll be more than happy to go through the paper.
Well, it's up for discussion now, so if there's reasons why you want to put it.
Pretty simple. Once it went to vote, it got beat sixty-four to thirty, forty-three, thirty-seven to hundred. So, and you want us to listen to the people. So there was four hundred and some votes. And a hundred and fifty-two agreed with you, Ron. Two-hundred-and-fifty-three agreed with not having it. So now, so I'm not, I'm not.
I'm sorry.
This is public comment, so we'll discuss the ifs and ands and buts in when we get to the discussion items regarding the marijuana to correlate.
Well, I'd just like to point out that to have the hubris for a board to pass and for the county to pass a 100-year moratorium on a product that is legal in the state, I'm not a pot smoker. But I'll tell you what, there's pot coming across the border in this place with fentanyl. Matter of my kid, had he chose to do it, go down to a legal shop, buy it, then buy that, because it's coming. You're gonna see some big problems. But to have the hubris to vote, to, to force a vote two generations down on what people want to do in the town, go ahead and just have a vote every year if you like, and see where people would want to go. Why not? Let people vote. This is telling people, we're gonna make the decision now and for later and for them and on down the road. Why do that? Let people vote on it. That's all I'm saying. Be a big mistake to force it down the people two generations down.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark. Anybody else?
Terry.
Terry Howard?
Um, I want to talk about, um, the community has gotten together, a handful of folks that wanted to do a citizens Memorial Day celebration. I emailed all of the board members so they were aware of what we're doing. Um, we're still in the planning stages of it. Um, we do have a pipe and drum band coming. Um, we're gonna hold it over at Forty Mile Feet. They've given us permission to use the lot. And, uh, we're gonna have the posting of the colors. We're gonna have a flag retirement and disposal ceremony from the Boy Scouts in Elizabeth. And, uh, cake baking contest, pie baking contest. Um, we're gonna have a live band. And have a dance during the evening. If anyone is interested in helping the committee out doing this, we greatly appreciate your support. If you got any questions on it or anything, email me, let me know, and I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, Joe. Thank you, ma'am.
Um, I just have something to add to that.
Okay.
Um, I was just in a meeting with Forty Mile Feet and Cowboy Up prior to the water meeting. And so the point of contact for that would be the town hall. Because there is an intent to sell alcohol at this event. The Forty, Forty Mile Feed requested that the town hosted, well, they're hosting it, but the town supports it. Cowboy Up has agreed to assist in collaboration with Forty Mile and the town. But again, it's in the beginning stages. So after that gets discussed, and I will have more for the boards.
And all you have to do is, uh, as a board approve the liquor or disapprove, right?
Correct. Yes, but this is, uh, so in, um, in speaking with Ms. Howard and Forty Mile Feet and Cowboy Up, it's, they're trying to make it a bigger event, you know, actually talked to the BFW in Elizabeth, trying to commemorate, commemorate, anyway, to, um, honor those who served. You know, it's not Veterans Day, it's Memorial Day. So, um, when more information comes down, I will send it out to the board and out to.
It's a day to remember.
There is also a committee that needs to be advised of this. The committee is making votes and stuff on things, so I will talk with Shannon. She is part of the committee, but she's not all of the committee. So, um, any info you get on it, I appreciate it. And I'm gonna call Shannon and find out what other things she's planning.
Yep.
This, this whole thing was based to be community-driven, not sponsored by the town. Um, as I said in the email, I was approached that we want to do something for Memorial Day. The town doesn't do anything, other little towns do. My response was, if you want to do something, do something. Let's get together, put ideas together and do something. And that's where this all derived from. So that's the direction we're trying to head.
And it's commemorate, got it out.
Yes, ma'am. Comment.
Who's on the committee?
Who's on the committee?
Um, Jocelyn Sloan, Shannon, um, Marissa, and I don't know Marissa's last name. Kim's wife just volunteered to be on it. Kim is helping.
So, there may be, there may be a little miscommunication, so this is something that just needs to be brought at a different time. But, uh, Forty Mile Feed was under the impression this was a town event. Um, and they would be hosting it.
I will check with that because that is not the meeting that we have.
Correct. So, um, yeah. So when there's more info on it, I will put it out to the board.
Okay. So it's gone from a community citizens memorial to the town of Kiowa?
No, so it is, it's a Kiowa, it's a, the exact words where it's for the community and uh, residents out, everybody outside of the community as well. This is not just a community event. This is for everybody.
Okay.
That was not the original intent of it, but I agree, there's miscommunication somewhere and, uh,
That's something we're trying to avoid, so.
They, they were involved in the original meeting, so yeah, we'll have to talk about that.
Rick?
Ma'am.
Who's gonna carry the general liability on this?
We are gonna purchase our own insurance on it.
Okay.
Shannon from Forty Mile Feet said she had special event insurance. And I said, it's up to you or I will personally get it. In my previous jobs, it was my responsibility to put events together. So I've got insurance companies that I've worked with for years that will do the live early insurance for us.
Uh, Terry, I think you need to talk.
Terry, I think you need to talk with Shannon then, because she's not under the impression that she's supplying the insurance.
Okay.
Okay.
She told the committee that she would, but that's not a problem. We will take care of that.
And the Cowboy Up president was there during the meeting that we had, and, you know, the liquor is a big deal, as the board knows. So this is something that Cowboy Up would like to get clarification on before they even come in front of the board.
I understand that. The question I have, who put this meeting together, and why wasn't the rest of the committee invited?
In other words, the committee, and I got invited.
Okay, we gotta move on. Approval of minutes from March 9. You have the minutes in your packet? We have a motion by Trevor to approve the minutes of March 9. Second by Tim. Any discussion? Yes, ma'am.
There is an area in here, in the minutes, where it said that Terry had requested a mayor's report. At the last meeting, in my notes, I have that, yeah, here it is. I requested there to be a place for board comments, and Trevor suggested that we put board comments in under public comments. That I did not see in the minutes.
Okay, well, we'll take care of that then.
What was that again?
Having board comments.
Under what?
We'll put it in with the mayor and town administrator next meeting.
So with that, just for the agenda, for agenda purposes, will the board be contacting me prior to the board so that I can put your name on there?
Would you?
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it just, you know...
It's just kind of hard to get emails or communication from the board, so I'd like to get, you know, I, I'd like, I'd like to get some notice. So I, that would be my request. I can put it before the administrator, so I can make that an A, as long as you please just contact me.
You want to be first, Trevor? It's okay. You can be A. Okay. All right, so we'll take care of that. Any more discussion items? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay. Expenditures, you have them in your packet?
The big expense here for March was just the cold weather gear that we purchased for the employee. For street plowing.
Yeah. And it came in handy when our street plower hit the little manhole, so he was happy to be warm.
In our Ellen bill is about a month and a half behind, so in the May bill, you should see all of the expenses that we are having with the repaint, the floor and the carpet. We are shy of $2,000, but that should be all of the expense for this.
Motion to approve the expenditures?
Motion to approve the expenditures? Terry?
I'll second it.
Trevor, second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign? Financials?
With the financials, I know it's a long report, and I haven't gotten the actual line items that Ronnie wants changed for 2020, but you can see at the end of each, excuse me, each report, that where we have spent, what percentage we've spent for the first quarter. And we are, ultimately, we are 15% spent of what we budgeted, so we're doing good. I'm waiting for Ronnie to, to send me the line items he wants changed, not only for the town board, but also for the water authority. Once that's done, you guys can see more of a detail, line by line, for 2020.
Any questions on the financials? We don't need a motion on that. Okay, we'll move on. No public hearings? Okay. Full business, Mr. Kraft, Kiowa Creek Development. How are you?
Hello.
Good. Mr. Tibbels, would you like to enlighten the board?
I have had the opportunity to review the development agreement for Kiowa Creek Meadows, which is essentially an infrastructure improvement type of agreement. He's going to be building, if it's approved, he'll be building the streets, he'll be building the utility, installing the utilities, making certain provisions for safety signage and things like that related to the developments out there. But as I understand it, Mr. Kraft is not in the business of erecting homes. He will be selling his lots as they are improved to third-party home builders. I've looked through this agreement at some length, and I've dealt with the previous counsel and his in-house counsel on this. And I would just say that I think it's a very well-drafted agreement that protects the town's interests. You have two other opportunities with respect to input on this. That would be with respect to the zoning and planting that takes place in his subdivisions, and with respect to the service plans, if you allow this agreement to go forward. He's asking for the right to establish metropolitan districts to help him as a financing tool. And those financing districts and tool, as tools, are very tightly regulated, or more tightly regulated than they were just a few years ago. The legislature has seen the complaints that have come around about metropolitan districts, and how metropolitan districts jack up taxes, walk away, leave the taxpayers holding unreasonable miller fees. Well, that's no longer the case as a matter of state law. And nothing in here violates or goes against that state law provision. So what he has done is provided a good sense of what the metropolitan districts will be doing going forward. And again, it's a financing tool for him that was made a necessity, more or less, by the way the banking laws have developed at a national level. Dodd-Frank Banking put just incredible burden on local banks in terms of what they can do to finance these kinds of local developments. So the metropolitan district, special district concept has kind of filled in a void, and has allowed developers and infrastructure types such as Kraft's organization, Mr. Kraft's organization, to have a mechanism to finance those kinds of improvements that will allow development to move forward and improve your community. And there's nothing in here that violates any law, nothing in here that gives him any advantage over any other person in the state that is, would come before this board and seek a similar type of operation. So my sense is that it's in the best interest of the town to move forward on this kind of agreement, knowing that you'll have two more bites at the apple with respect to how this thing get put together. So from a legal perspective, I would certainly approve it as the legal form. Just from my background as a special district attorney who's done these kinds of agreements, I've worked all those metropolitan districts around Castle Rock, Dawson Ridge, all around, all of the villages. I was condemnation attorney for some of the roadways that were put in around the town of Castle Rock. And we, we had it a little looser back in those days. We moved a little bit faster, a lot looser. The state legislature has since acted, and this agreement is in full conformance with that. So my recommendation would be, if you want to move forward with development in the town, it certainly is the time to do so. And I would recommend the adoption of the agreement as it's presented right now. So, and I'm happy to ask. Yes?
Bob, I emailed you copy on Friday to all of the town board and to you with requirements that the water board requested be changed in that. Why are we not addressing those if you're recommending?
Well, it's because it's between you, you as a different...
Oh, no, 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 no. In your agreement with the town, there is a section that our attorney reviewed, and I said that in the email, that I asked you to please review that.
I did review that, but it's, you still stay in separate...
I know it's a separate agreement, but there's also verbiage that we ask you to consider in your agreement.
Okay.
Not in our agreement, in your agreement.
Okay. Did you present that this afternoon to, in your meeting to...
No, this is part of your agreement.
All right. I misunderstood that then. I apologize for that. If I may, at least Section 8 addresses that developer water authority vented into so-and-so for an agreement?
Yes, but in, there were, our attorney reviewed the actual town agreement, and our attorney agreed it on just our portion on our behalf. And there were changes that he asked the town board to consider. So for you guys to recommend that it be approved as it stands, I'm a little messed.
Our, my, my, that was my, I take responsibility for that. It was my misunderstanding. I thought it was something that you had worked out with Kraft in advance. That's not the case. I will put that proviso in, that I would, just want one more opportunity to review that, and...
Well, Tim hasn't been made aware of those. There were very minor changes, Tim, but it had to do with the vested rights, that the water and sewers were vested rights would not match the town's. And we changed the, asked that that be changed in there, and there were some other deals that...
I was under the understanding that that was circum...
No, I was very clear that I needed you guys to review that and get back with us.
I did review it, and read it, and I think we definitely need to...
I heard from no one, so...
We need to do that.
I don't have any disagreement. I reviewed it briefly, but I was under the understanding that something different had happened. I take responsibility for my own misunderstanding there, Debbie. So if we, if we just need that one matter taken care of, then, you know, we, I guess the board could approve it subject to that final review and approval on that issue?
Yeah. I, I think we need to actually incorporate that into before we do any approval.
All right. We can do that. All right. No, that's, and that is my mistake. I accept that.
And if we need to do a special meeting for that?
Yeah. Terry?
Debbie, could you resend that email? I did not receive it.
Did you send it to the Kraft organization?
No, I did not. This was, I sent this directly to the board.
Right, but still, we need to have the agreement from them, correct? I mean, it's not like you're dictating a term, or are you asking us to...
I asked for you to review, and, and your board to review it and modify your, to consider the water authority when you made this agreement.
Okay.
My agreement is totally set, and I will work, mine, my apologies, Tim. It's the pile of water and wastewater.
Right.
But our agreement is separate with that.
Very good. I understand that. Okay.
You did, but they did discuss water and sewer in your agreement.
I understand.
If I may, the water and sewer section of the developer's agreement was largely removed, with the exception of the language stating that this document is also tied to a separate water board approval as identified in the document to be named reception number acts.
So if, yes, but it also says, so he was asking that the developer and the water authority hereby agree that the terms and conditions of the new well development agreement are not vested rights under this agreement, as stated as the vested rights statute.
Okay. Is that the only change?
You can see the screen for the board, the email that Debbie sent on Friday?
Can't quite see that, but...
So is that the only change?
Here, I will hand this to you.
You already have it. Oh, I'll forward it. Sure.
Because I, I didn't get it on Friday.
COVID update, public health update. I didn't hear back from you. Because it's not in here.
So this is more than I can reasonably read now?
No, because I asked the board to review it.
Right, but by the same token, it's a, it's a...
No, it is not, it was not to be presented to him until we had decided what our stance was.
I see. Okay.
So I guess, and we're kind of getting back into a water board territory, which is really the town councils, but the town boards. But why is the water board weighing in on decisions the town is making about, say, district formation?
I, they did, they aren't. They, he, he put questions in there. If you read it, it's a question.
Okay.
He asked them to review it. So no, I should not have sent, I, that's why I didn't send that document to you. I emailed to you what our board had proved. At that point, that was the only thing I should be emailing to you.
Okay. All right. Very good. Well, then we'll, we're not making any progress. Like, this is...
I don't blame him. He's frustrated.
Is there a time we've been here?
Question. How long would, would it take you to...
Real short, if you wanted, if you wanted to schedule a special meeting, is it as early as next week?
Could we just review it right now? And, I mean...
We need our attorneys to look at this. They're not on standby to review the language. It's gonna involve multiple attorneys on our side.
Can we have a meeting Tuesday without giving you enough time on your side?
Next Tuesday?
Yes, sir.
That does give us time. Let me see if we're available. I mean, it's really up to the board to review and put their thoughts and concerns about the comments from the water authority.
Right.
Really, I mean, it's more, and can you guys turn this around?
Yeah, right. Well, as long as everybody here understands that there's a turnaround time. And if you have comments, you need to get the comments to me, and then we can...
So, here's, here's my question. This is just, and I'm speaking out loud. Now everybody has home... But if we get, if Bob, if you can review, we have a quick workshop as a board on Thursday night, so 48 hours from now. And we send the final to Tim for Tuesday meeting. I mean, I, I don't want to, so here's why I'm looking at, and, and you've been, I know where you're at. I mean, this is shit. Excuse me. I, I thought we're coming in here to basically figure out where we're, instead of where we're not.
Well, if you guys reviewed the changes that he asked for, then, I mean, you can either make them or not make them. You guys have had Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
So if I may, and I think I understand where you're coming from, having been at the meeting that we were just there.
Right.
And correct me if I'm wrong, as... And correct me if I'm wrong, as from the legal perspective, but nothing that the town does in this agreement prohibits the water board from doing something dramatically different, especially seeing as your agreement is referenced in this document. So, that's the point of that line is so that you're giving another, another board, another authority.
No, we're just giving them some input, basically, as I saw it. But I had, again, I, I was under the misunderstanding that this was to be circulated to you so that you would have at least some idea that what the board would be discussing. There aren't a number, there aren't a whole lot of things in here. I can get it turned around twenty-four or forty-eight hours, meet with this board on Thursday and be ready to go next Tuesday. I have no problem with that.
I can, I agree with that.
I'm unable next Tuesday. I have another board meeting. I mean, I think it's gonna take a couple more turns and one back and forth if there's a lot of comments that we saw.
Let, let, let me do this. I will, I'll be out of here Thursday. We can discuss it then. Then we can get, I'll get comments to you right away.
Okay.
And then we'll set a meeting based on your schedule.
A tentative meeting.
A tentative meeting based on your schedule and then we'll get, check it out.
Sounds good.
So. You'll, you'll know what our comments are. These will be what you have in front of you. Because if we did it backwards, we'd do something, we'd still need your turn. And you'd still say, I have some, I think something. My attorneys tell me it's okay.
Understood.
So, yeah. And it's a unique situation since we're dealing with a water board that has to be thoroughly separate from the town. And you've understood and how, I believe that's what we've been going down the whole way.
Fair enough.
I take responsibility for my mistake for not having the full understanding. We didn't, or I would have. Address my board accordingly. So, I apologize for that. I apologize to my board for that. None of them. Appreciate it. I apologize to Debbie.
Well, I just frustrated you.
No, I understand.
Your frustration and I made a point. This is exactly the communication problem. And I purposely made sure that everyone there had it.
Understand, Debbie. No, I have it. I have it. I've looked at it, so.
Bob, what time are we talking about on Thursday?
What time can everybody get off?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
Yeah.
Seven o'clock.
That's a special meeting, please.
This Thursday?
Yep. Debbie, you're invited. If you don't have anything to do. Okay. We appreciate your patience.
We get it. We understand. Thanks for bearing with us. We appreciate you after ten minutes.
Any more discussion with Mr. Kraft? Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay. All right, moving on to our discussion items.
With discussion items, a Elbert County ordinance eighteen dash two, which is part of a packet, that's something that was brought up by Strummer and now is the time if you wanna share your thoughts, Strummer.
Well, as I alluded to before, we will, we tend to sit down. Got voted down. And if you look through the entire elections of everything that Elbert County had results on, it was probably the most definitive vote in terms of the outcome of elections. I went back and I looked at kind of where the county commissioners, when they did the moratorium and it was basically the same split. We're in the center of the county. We're the county seat. And so, you know, we got one or two options and this is where it is. The, the people in the town that voted spoke and they spoke pretty solidly. And like I said, it was sixty, sixty-two and a half or almost sixty-two and a half percent to thirty-seven and a half. So, that's where this moratorium comes from. Now, it does no good for Elbert County to have a county moratorium if one little town in the middle decides to go rogue and tell them to go pound sand. We're gonna do it in the middle. So, part of it goes, we're all in a community. It affects all of us. And whether you're five miles outside of town, twenty miles outside of town, you know, this is how, the, the effects is bigger than just here. Couple of other things and I, I mean, I, I don't, I mean, here's what I'm going off of. I'm going off of the vote of the people, the will of the people. But, and the final thing that I wanna bring up to is this is like a scab. This sunbuck has been rubbed and agitated, been sore for over a year. And here we are and, and I'm trying to put closure to it and move forward and heal from it and go on. And there's a small, there's a small group, there are probably a hundred and fifty-two people that wanna kick my ass and I really don't care. I got a five-year-old and a five-month-old in my house. It'd be more to, than, than four hundred people combined. And you think that it's a big deal to me and it's a big deal to youth. And let me tell you, since twenty fourteen with youth, the suicides have increased by twenty-two percent that have tested, or excuse me, two-hundred-and-fifty percent that tested positive for marijuana in their systems. I mean, this isn't just me being personal. I'm like, and, and all I'm saying is I don't care if you smoke it. I don't care if you feed it to your dog. I don't care if you take the gummy bears to go to sleep at night. I just don't wanna be insulted right there. And that's what went to vote. It wasn't whether you did it or not. It's that we don't wanna sell it. Yes, ma'am.
Terry?
Why do we need a moratorium? It was voted down. If it comes up on the ballot again, we don't know what way it's gonna go. Why do we need a moratorium? It was voted down. We can't do it right now. And until there's another election to do that, I don't understand why we need to have a moratorium on it.
That's good.
It is legal in the state of Colorado and we also need to take a look. That is actually an amendment to our constitution in Colorado. And to my knowledge, not specifically with this, but town, county, municipalities, anything are not supposed to vote in an ordinance or a code that is in conflict with the Colorado constitution. My experience, I know that. Nothing to do with marijuana. It had to do with another issue. I just don't understand why we have to have a moratorium again. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, I'm not voting for the moratorium. I don't think anybody at this table should vote for the moratorium. When I ran to be on the town board of Kiowa, I did it to be part of a democracy, not a dictatorship.
Thank you.
And if we have seven people deciding what this town is allowed to do for a hundred years, that's a dictatorship.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Times change, people change and minds change. And that's not up to us to decide. That's not allowed to happen. That's all I gotta say.
I'm gonna agree with Terry and Tim that it is not our place, sitting at this point in time right here, right now, to decide what happens fifty years from now or up to a hundred years from now. That's up to the people that live in the community then. I agree that the people voted it down. It will not be sold in this town. It was very clear. I don't believe we need a moratorium dictating that far into our future. We don't do that for anything else that we, that we do here. Nothing.
Any other comments?
Any board members think we don't have marijuana in this town? You've got rose-colored glasses on. And speaking of the sale of the stuff, we have it right here in town right now. Right here at Jade Gas. You can go down there and buy any pipe you want. Just smoke your marijuana, if that's what you wanna do. You're allowing that. Jade Gas has a big old glass case, glass pipes, bongs, papers, every smoking utensil you need. You sell it right here in the community already. The moratorium wouldn't help you at all.
Any other discussion?
I didn't realize the public was still open for a public discussion, but as a member of this community, I'm heavily invested. I've got a lot of money, a lot of roots in this community. I don't wanna have to worry year after year after year that that's gonna change. This is our community. Our community decided not to do this and I don't want it to come up on ballot every year. I don't want it to be an issue every year. I want to know that my kids and my grandkids are gonna grow up in a community, but we don't have to worry about this.
Terry?
Please correct me if I'm wrong. I wasn't on the board when this came about. Did we not have a moratorium in place when it was put on the ballot? Or, let me rephrase that. Did we not have, I recall us repealing a code, an ordinance or something in order for that to be on the ballot? So, am I correct? You guys weren't on the board? Did that happen?
Okay.
So.
It was a legal thing.
Yeah. Right. So, who's to say that's not gonna come up again? Four years from now, citizens wanna put it on the ballot again? They're willing to go back and repeal, redo this moratorium. Just like Cindy said, I'm sorry, Carrie. I don't have the right to decide what this town's gonna do ten years from now. We don't have the right to tell them, yes, you can do this. No, you can't do this. If we're gonna do that, then let's do moratoriums on all sorts of stuff and don't let anybody do anything then.
Yes, I, I think that was so the town could collect the tax on it, if I remember right.
Yeah, something like that.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we would have had to repeal all prohibitions against it. In order to claim marijuana sales of any type or prohibited by county ordinance. The vote was on the question of whether to repeal the prohibition. The prohibition remains in effect as it was before the vote.
So, we still have a prohibition in place?
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, I, again, there's, there's nothing else that the town has ever done in, in boards before us or boards ahead of us that are gonna put anything in place for a hundred years. I, that's, that's just, that's, that doesn't make sense to me. I mean, if we're gonna do it on one thing, do it on everything. No, I, I don't agree with that.
Is Terry correct when she says that we can't do a moratorium against a law that's already?
With respect to a statute, with a constitutional matter, that's an open issue for a court. I, I wouldn't want to have kindened that right now without having researched the issue.
Okay.
But courts aren't usually inclined to go that long a time allowing moratoriums, particularly if there's an issue that's already been decided as a matter of constitutionality within the state of Colorado.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I have a question just because I don't know the code book inside and out. Did you say we already have a prohibition?
Oh, yes, prohibition in place.
Prohibition's in place. Why are we doing moratorium right now?
It's a duplication. You're adopting a policy that was adopted by three people.
Because if it's. Because if it's prohibited, then it's prohibited for longer than a hundred years.
It's prohibited until we vote.
Yeah, right.
Okay, well, it is on a discussion item and I would like for you to research that just a tickle after we take care of Tim and, and see where our legal boundaries are because, you know, we, we've got this down under discussion items and and just make sure that we're doing everything completely legal. Because these ladies, you know, the discussion is correct, you know. I'm not a marijuana fan, but, you know, ten, twenty years, I'll be gone and the people eighty, ninety years down the road may have a change of heart. I don't know.
Well, again, from my initial take on what the county's done, the county has adopted an ordinance. And an ordinance can be repealed even though it says a hundred years. It could be repealed next week. It is just an ordinance. It's not a statutory or it's not a constitutional provision that requires both people statewide or it's just merely a almost like a recommendation.
Symbolic.
Yeah, more symbolic.
Yeah. Well, and for the purpose of discussion right now, as of the last vote, the, the people of the town voted it down. It's, it's already prohibited in the discussion. There you go. Okay.
We do, we do have watchers at home or via Zoom. I have Danielle Ullam who wants to put on record that the people in this county don't want this in our town. People are not coming to Elbert County to buy pipes and papers. That's just ridiculous.
Well, I don't know. I don't, you know, I guess a smoker would buy those, but normal public, you know, if we have a prohibition already, we're, we're going down the road. Okay, we're moving on. Cowboy Up. That's you. He's on my list. Is she on there?
Mr. Mayor put you on the spot.
I like putting you on the spot. She built a two-story. She hadn't blocked my view. You know I love you.
I'm prepared to talk to everybody, but I'm here from Cowboy Up, I guess, to ask for a sponsorship, co-partnership with the board. We had touched briefly on this at the egg hunt that we had and we would like to be partners with you for all the events that we do, for you to do your advertising and us help you, you help us type deal.
Community partners.
The, pardon me?
Community partner.
Yes, sir. That's it. Exactly. Perfect verbiage. So, in the history of Cowboy Up, twenty-five years now, there has been no town that has partnered up with Cowboy Up. We would be the first, which would, I guess, be suiting if Cowboy Up happens in Kiowa. As you have seen by, with email traffic and text messages, sometimes it's hard to get volunteers for different events. This is something that Cowboy Up would help facilitate. I know sometimes our lights die with the winds for the tree lighting and you're talking about three thousand, four thousand dollars every year. This is something that, in speaking to Cowboy Up and as you were told on this past weekend, you know, we could put donation, a donation can up like our liquor things that we do for all the events in town and we could notify people. You notice to bring people back here to spend money and that's the whole idea of the thing. So that we can grow as a community and have people want to come back to our events, you know, make it bigger and better for us.
Mr. Mayor, if I may suggest the, this seems to call for a memorandum of understanding between the two organizations so that there's a formal, but not overly legalistic document that defines the responsibilities and the liabilities of the parties in this sense. So, I think that's the way you need to go about it. So, just a simple memorandum of understanding, couple pages long, just says they're gonna do this, the town's going to do this. So, just a simple memorandum of understanding, couple pages long, it just says, they're going to do this, the town's going to do this.
So Bob, with that, it's something that is offered, I guess, to everybody annually.
It's like a sponsorship, isn't it?
Right. It's for the event, it's for that pamphlet, yeah, so it's not
So that you know, okay, you've got an agreement with them. And you say you're going to advertise one of their events. And if they say they're going to participate and provide this kind of assistance, so it's fairly simple type of
There's just, what it is is it's right here.
Okay, that's good. We can incorporate this into a memo so that everybody knows what to expect of each other ahead of time on a consistent basis.
Okay, it's just a matter of, what you receive is what the event sponsor gets on there. That's what it is, and what we're doing is just offering to you that we can allow you to put up your cans at our events to get money, donations for your, like the lights.
Like the tree lights.
Sure.
Type of thing, and
Let's just have something that sets up what that understanding is, so that you don't have to come in every year and convince a whole group of people.
Oh, we have to do that every year anyway, because I have to come in for the liquor license next month anyway.
Just so there's a long-term understanding among the board of what we're doing with Cowboy Up.
I think we're getting a couple of things confused here. Terry and Angelique talked with Kim, Cindy, myself and Jonathan, you were there, right?
But, not to, I'm not trying to interrupt you, it was not a meeting that I was getting information, let me make that clear. They were giving me information, I didn't want to misconstrue anything, so I let the president of Cowboy Up, you know.
And the right, we understood it. Walked away, is that they were asking for a sponsorship for this year's rodeo. The four of us happened to think that's a good idea. Cindy said that as long as she's been on the board, they've never been approached, the town hasn't. So I don't understand, if we're going to sign the paper to be a sponsorship, that covers us. What they're going to do, what we're going to do. And you have to come back to us every year to do this, so
Yes, we go to all our sponsors.
Am I wrong? Well, that was my understanding of it.
No, it is an annual thing, every year we have to, and for, you know, like, certain items on that list, you get first right of refusal, because, you know, like, the events, which is what you would be, or the bucking shoots or the overheads, those are your prime areas for advertising for whoever. So it would just, it was a benefit thought for both of us.
And if I may.
And introduce yourself, because I don't think
This is Angelique. My name is Angelique Dick, I'm president of Cowboy Up in Kiowa.
Hey, how good.
Sorry. As president, I just came from our meeting. And I will tell you that our committee and our constituents that support our rodeo every year are very excited to have the town involved. You know, I don't know what's happened in the past, but to have the town involved as a sponsorship, as a partnership, that we can say, you know, the town supports us, is Cowboy Up, is very exciting to our whole committee, our whole board. I just came from our meeting and they are very excited, they're like, wow, what can we do to help that board? What can we do to partner? Nothing having to do with a memorandum of understanding, it's just that how do we partnership with a town in which we are putting a rodeo on? That brings twenty-five hundred people to the town of Kiowa. And we have statistics, we can show you what it brings, it brings over two hundred, three hundred contestants to the town of Kiowa with their families, who spend money at all the businesses up and down here. So, you know, that's what we want to do, we want to partner with you guys, we would love to have you guys as volunteers, you know, we would love to, you know, just say, hey, our town supports our rodeo.
Did I understand correctly that the sponsorship is fifteen hundred fifty dollars, is that what?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And that will be coming back through any donations that we get.
Yes, the cans that are there are yours when, you know, I'd have Maria do what fancy little artwork or whatever she wants to go on the outside. And it would just sit on either end of the booths, because we'll have three of them there, if y'all approve that next month. That they can put their extra dollars or whatever they want into it.
So keep in mind, that fifteen fifty, if I may, Cowboy Up and Kiowa makes no money. Okay, guys, it goes back into the community, we start at zero every year. All right, that is our goal. That fifteen fifty, if the board needs a breakdown of what that covers, that covers our costs, our added money for the event. It covers our buckle costs, it covers our ad costs and the program costs. We make nothing on it. Okay, so we want to make sure that you guys know that we're not, you know, we're not, that sponsorship cost is astronomical, because it just covers our costs. And if you need a breakdown, then we're happy to get it through.
And if Bob puts together a little agreement, is there any problem with that? Go.
So if I may, I just want to remind the board that during our budget workshops last year, we allocated money for such events, because we have had such a hard time putting up the lights with no money, because we have failed to forecast in the past. This would ultimately be a wash, even if there was no donation jars, because we've already allocated it for the year.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Personally, and if we can do this, Bob, I don't know, I would like to make a motion that we do this sponsorship after each board member has read the little agreement that Cowboy Up has provided.
I think you probably want to do this first and then bring it up at the May meeting, I think you were anticipating.
Yes, I have to come in for our liquor licenses on that day.
Yeah, because we're in the discussion items and that's what these are.
Circulate this and then I can give, again, two-page, simple thing.
I think that
Since we're going to have a meeting on Thursday, is there a way that this could be on the meeting for Thursday? Because they will be going to publication and they need that check.
Our posters and everything are being printed next week, so.
Then I rescind my motion until Thursday.
Okay, we're discussion item right down the road.
Make copies of this, Marie, so we can get this out.
Okay, let's see. We have a couple of, and you guys won't hurt my feelings if you're ready to go, unless you want to hear the nuisance request, but we have some, we've had some things go on in the community that I think we as a board need to just think about and see what you think.
Thanks for coming, guys.
Thank you, guys.
These include some nuisance resolutions. You walk down, I walk the town quite often, just because I need to. And things like, and I've gone through the ordinance book, and one of the biggies along forty-five is people walking their dog and not cleaning up after them. Not cleaning up after their dog in the park, et cetera. Vehicles parked in front yards, camp trailers, pop-up tents, things like that. People blocking the sidewalk for the kids to get to school, is kind of one of my pet peeves. But these are things that I would like to introduce ordinances so that we can, you know, have the community help us keep our town clean and help our kids get to school without having to walk in the street around vehicles and, you know, not having motorhomes or something parked in the front yards and this and that, so. If there's anything that you see that you would like to introduce, or anything right off the top of your head, let us know. And, you know, we'll discuss it and take it down the road, yes, ma'am.
My pet peeve is people and businesses in town that don't close their dumpsters.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, when it gets to be racking season, these dumpster lids are open.
And I think we could, I think we could do that through our code letter, close your dumpsters, lock them up. Because I know we had a raccoon problem at Vino's, and then we had a porcupine problem at Vino's, so.
It'd be nice if we could get people to lock, I see a lot of people drive around town and drop their own personal trash on various dumpsters.
And if they lock them, we will know that problem.
Especially early, early in the morning, it's crazy.
And somebody dumped their washing machine and washer down on the corner down here, so, kind of a gross thing. So.
I would suggest, because this would help with code enforcement, some, maybe, if we can, get a resolution.
We'll actually get a code.
Well, I'm just saying, a resolution or a schedule of fees or something for infractions. I'm not sure how to do that.
Well, I'll look through the code book.
Yeah, because right
You and I can work on that.
Okay, right now, we have a, and the mayor has been here, this week I've had at least seven phone calls about a goat.
Yeah, a goat, a goat.
About a male goat.
Somebody moved a male goat into their yard, and they're complaining that the male goat stinks. So.
That's usually a pretty accurate statement.
But I'm not kidding, we're getting, we're getting seven calls, we've had seven calls on that very issue.
Wow.
But if you look at the code, there's only the only nuisance or the only thing against animals is them running wild. So it's really not illegal or against any regulations to have a female, male, whatever goat, you know, so I'm stuck as to what to tell the resident. So that's something that we need to, I don't know if, working with Bob and then having work sessions to approve something.
Don't talk to their neighbor.
They are, because you live in Kiowa, where there's goats.
To be real honest with you, that doesn't happen a lot.
Yeah, well, yeah, but I
Okay, so we'll put something together on that, okay. All right, our final discussion item is the Kiowa Police Department. And
I want to back up to the open dumpsters.
Okay, go.
It seems to me that there's already something in the code book about the dumpsters and dumping trash and other people's, because I remember when Sam was
Yeah, it's against the law.
Yeah, I remember when Sam was here, he was talking about that.
But again, we have no one to, I mean, unless the owner, dumps, yeah, the owner of the dumpster sees them, or one of us see them, and
I thought you were talking about adopting a code for that. I thought it was already a deal.
It is, and so, well, I mean, we're just going to have to keep a, well, if they lock their dumpsters, A, we wouldn't have any nuisance problem, and B, nobody could throw their trash in there, so. Okay, so, let's move on. The Kiowa Police Department discussion item, when the auditor was down here, and I know this is one of the things that I like to see happen, but we have just this year had money in the budget in the positive, okay? All the past years, and I don't know where all the money goes, but we haven't, we've been in the red. There's no black numbers. And he suggested that we hold off with a police department until we can actually afford it. Now, I know that there's grants out there, there's people willing to help us out. But one of our board members, and she's, I'm going to point to her here in a minute, and she's going to say her piece, because she's been on the board a long time, thank you for telling us what you shared with Maria.
You know, what I shared with Maria is, you know, the police department, it has only, like, been, had been active for about twenty years in this town. The town of Kiowa, at some point in time, decided to start pulling like thirty thousand dollars a year out of Roman Street Fund to help fund the police department. This town has never been in a position that we can independently fund the police department on its very own, its very own budget, without taking other money from other areas of the town, you can look around and see what kind of shape our streets are in. That thirty thousand dollars for as many years as it was taken out. I mean, that was, that, it was a bad idea to begin with, we had some people that had lived here in town for a long time that came forward and stated they didn't agree with the police department then, because we didn't have the finances to do it. We don't have the finances to do it right now, and I think it would be extremely fiscally irresponsible of us to think that we can't afford that right now, because we just never have had the money to do so, without robbing Peter to pay Paul.
And we can't do that, we're not going to do that, no. Because our police department for the community was costing us right around two hundred and twenty-five thousand a year. And that was, that's a huge amount of money. And if we hold off a little bit and we put together grants, we put together whatever we, you know, we've reached out to people, but he suggested we don't do that until we're more fiscally in the black. And, you know, our sales tax being voted down didn't help us any, that would have brought in eighty thousand dollars or so a year. So the community, you know, needs to get behind this, if they want to, you know, if they want an officer, and I'd like to see one personally, but not until we can afford it, so just so you have a little background on that.
I think too that we need to look at, you know, the reserves that we need, if we have an emergency in this town, we need the money to handle some
Exactly.
Same thing too is what I'm reading in terms of economic downturn, because this is, this is going to it's going to bust. And, I mean, if you remember, or if we were able to go back and pull up the data of what Kiowa went through budget-wise through two thousand, say, two thousand six through two thousand ten, the town, you know, there was, that's where a lot of that shortfall, some significant amount of shortfall showed up, and they started getting farther and farther behind, and and that's other things, you know, we we got to be on solid foundation.
Absolutely, no doubt.
Can't start it and let it fail.
Okay, so thank you for everybody's input, we have, that's the last of, any more discussion? Yes, ma'am.
One, we have one thing from Zoom, we have Kenneth Cardwell, and he is asking if we have paid everything we owe ECHO. ECHO, I'm sorry. Which was the dispatch and victims' fees.
Are we paid back on that?
Are we paid back?
To my knowledge, to my knowledge, is the ECHO attorney, yes. I'm not aware, I'm a regular Pat, they're a financial manager on a regular basis, and she told me that we are up to date, the town is up to date.
Okay, well, Mr. Cardwell, I know that.
With the IGA, oh, he can hear, with the IGA, the IGA did state that we would pay five thousand dollars a year, the IGA was terminated. When we terminated the IGA, I did check in with ECHO, and since we had paid through third quarter, we were done. There's some miscommunication, again, or something, maybe the mayor or, and somebody from the board or myself can meet with one of the county commissioners and get that straightened out, because we did receive a six thousand dollar bill stating that we owe them for twenty twenty-one services.
And the thing I'd like to bring up, I'll get you in a minute, Mark, so you're armed and guitar, the thing I'd like to bring up is you know, when we have the Sheriff's Department agreement, and the funds, the fees were presented to us to cover nine-one-one in the town, which was five grand a month, right? A month.
Yes.
And I questioned that because we all pay county taxes, all of us do. And so to charge us an extra five grand a month, just answer nine-one-one calls when we're already being taxed by the county is something that you scratch your head about. You know, they're here to protect and serve all the citizens of Albert County, whether we're in the town or not in the town. So we need to go down and discuss that, we'll go take care of it.
I'll try and get on the next Board of Commissioners' agenda.
I don't find a good discussion. Okay, Mark has some input, young man.
Some help with your vote issue. It should be handled just as a regular nuisance call, same as barking dog. But on the owner's part of the goat, intact male goats stink. Newer goats do not stink, so there is an option for them to decide not to have intact males and
Okay.
You don't have that problem, I wouldn't owe an intact male goat.
Yeah, I couldn't even imagine living next door to that. Richard?
My goat was staked and he didn't stink.
A couple of things. The ordinance on the parked vehicles in the front yards, we already have an ordinance against that. It's already in the book as an ordinance for the town of Kiowa. I remember a couple of years ago, I believe Mr. Combe, Mayor Combe, said to the point that you can't have a restoration vehicle in your garage unless it is licensed, plated, and insured. That's on the ordinance. I was on the board when we had it on. I would like to file a complaint against the car down here at the end of, uh.
Comanche?
Right in front of U Village. It's a Durango, it's been sitting there for over seven months, has not moved. That is a problem for me, plow.
Okay.
It, it's just abandoned. I mean, it's been sitting there for seven months. I don't know why something hadn't been done up to this point on it. The, um, dog feces, my God, you can walk past some of these houses and people have not cleaned up the dog poop in years, and it does get pretty great. But we do have a ordinance on abandoned vehicles and non-registered vehicles, RVs, anything that does.
Well, I searched that pretty hard when I was, when I had an issue, and I'm going to have to go back and revisit that book, because I couldn't find it.
I'll also look it up and try and get.
And, uh, the people's yards, if they want to stink it up, that's their business, right?
Yeah, but it's not fair to your neighbor.
And I understand that, so I don't know if that would be, we'll, we'll discuss that one pretty hard. Okay, any other business? Yes, sir.
Yeah, going back to the clown, how about people that park their cars on the street in a winter storm? I, I see people pull their cars out of their driveways before the storm hits and park it on the street.
Well, the one that we really get concerned with, because this is, uh, the Comanche Street, and I personally put letters on people's windshields that if this is here when we plow, it's going to be towed. And the one vehicle in question has not been there since.
Nope.
And so we try to get the message out to all the citizens, especially on eighty-six, that that is a snowplow route. And in the neighborhoods.
Eighty-six is Albert, or, uh.
It's state highway, but in the neighborhoods, we do have, you know, some people's, that's where they park, is in the, in the streets, and I don't know how to.
You got a stinking three-car garage.
Well.
They got a driveway just as wide, they actually pull them out of their driveways and park them on the street before a storm.
Well, we'll have to see what we can do.
I testify to that, because I live across the street from.
What problem?
No, I mean, it's a problem.
I understand.
I'm from Minnesota.
Yeah.
I plowed for many years back here. And when they say that the bitch is bad enough, you got a big enough truck, wow, push them off.
Yeah.
The streets clears.
Yeah, we do. And I have to commend our street plower for doing a pretty good job. Yes, ma'am.
Backing up, um, is, are we in the black because of COVID then?
Uh, we are, you want to take that one? We are in the black, because.
No.
No.
I was just going to say.
We didn't get that much.
Police department, we should not ever include COVID funding into that number.
The COVID funding went for things that would, A, protect the board, and like that little gadget there and that little thing there.
Yeah.
So that we can.
Hopefully those findings are going to go away. I don't think they are, but.
Yeah.
We shouldn't ever bank on.
Oh, no.
No, we, uh, we.
Oh, we got that one.
We were actually the only town in the county that actually spend our funds by the time allocated, hence the TVs and all this stuff that you see, just so that people that do not necessarily feel safe at home can join in. Um, again, uh, Mr. Cardwell, uh, will follow up later, but, uh, the town is responsible for their own police department calls. Um, and I will make sure sheriff pays a visit about the fees.
Oh, good. I love visiting with them. Okay, thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Any more, how about, what can we do about speeders on the city streets?
Speeders?
People that drive a suspension fast.
Oh, yeah, we know that. But Albert County.
They can't, they won't even drive down the street.
I know, they don't drive down our street.
You know, there's a park.
Actually, some, they had two of them pulled over on eighty-six.
On eighty-six. I live on Chippewa, there's a park up there, everybody knows about it, right? There's no speed limit, there's no, a park, children playing or anything.
Live in the alley and see how they go down that. Live in the alley and see how they go down that one.
I can imagine.
Well, there is some signage we need to do.
And we have to wait till somebody gets hit?
Well, no, we hope that doesn't happen. But there is some signage we need to catch up on. And, uh, the children playing one, the parks are really important, um, to protect the kids, but until we have, you know, I've thought about spike strips in my front yard, but that would be not very nice for the poor people that want cats. But, but you're right, and I, I try to catch people. Cindy and I were talking in front of her, no, it doesn't do any good to tell them. But, you know, the guy that came down Navajo blew the stop sign in a big old Cadillac and didn't even blink an eye. As we progress into, and, and this is my thought, if our, if our development goes through, the traffic will probably increase a little bit. And so we've, I, I've talked to different people about how we slow them down. And we slow them down with more stop signs, we slow them down with speed humps, not bumps, speed humps in our, in our neighborhoods, so that we don't have this craziness. But that's, that's got to be down the road as we develop, but the signage, we can, we can work on that now, so. But the speed humps and things will have to come after their traffic study is done and this and that. They've got a lot of work to do on it, because it's an expensive proposition to put those in, so.
And all they do is make more noise when the car speeds by them and.
Well, we, we're going to try to do our best with what we have, and that's all we can do, until we do get law enforcement back in town. And again, you know, if we would have had the eighty thousand from our sales tax and the sales tax before that, we'd be sitting a little bit prettier, but nobody wants to pay that extra penny every time they buy something. So it, it's difficult. Yeah, what, yeah, Terry.
What question, I don't know if this is anything that could be done or not, but talking about, um, speeding and such, is there any possibility? Um, when I worked, uh, in the apartment industry, we were able to contract with off-duty police officers that would help enforce. Um, is that a possibility that we could look at for off-duty sheriff deputies to be able to help us control the speeders?
That's essentially what we tried to do, and the level of expense is so high even for an off-duty officer, I mean.
Okay, okay. No, I was just curious.
Right now, I mean, you know, if there was some way we could work something out with the county in that regard.
Okay.
Continue to investigate that.
Okay. I mean, it might help us out a little bit.
That's what we had in the police department before. I believe when I got here, there was, uh, it was allocated for, uh, a chief, two cops, one part-time cop, and at some point, they had three or four reserves. And the reserves, for the most part, were, were reserves to keep their certifications up. But the town would be paying to keep up the certifications.
Okay. All right, we added a few things at the end, and, uh, I have nothing else on the agenda. We have no executive session. We are going to meet on, uh, Thursday at seven, if you can make it. If you can't, Zoom it. And Terry, do you have a comment?
Um, I was just thinking, this might help us, and it might help Maria out as well. Um, is there any possibility we could put like action items for the next meeting? Because I, you know, we go a month in between, and I'm old and I'm forgetful, and if it's sitting on an agenda, then I know, okay, this is something that we've got to go back to. It's just a suggestion. But it might be helpful.
All right.
What, what did you want the action item to be so good?
Well, um, like, say, for example, um, say we decided that we were going to do a nuisance resolution, but we're going to put it off till the next meeting. That should show on action items that we're going to talk about the nuisance resolution. Yeah, right.
But pay attention.
Right, because I know a lot of things have gotten tabled in the past, there's regrets, we should get about them.
But what, I guess I'm a little confused. I know that it's an action item, kind of like old business, but it's, is the, I guess, is there kind of like a homework assignment, like, hey, the board will go research nuisance, will go research the code, they owe Maria, uh, you know, comments, concerns, whatever, by this date, so that we can actually act on it for the next meeting, so that I'm not waiting till the last minute for an agenda. So I would say, um, that, that's the only way that I see an action item or an old business actually working, is if we both take some responsibility there.
Sure. Um, and, and I, I mean, typically, what should be done at the end of the meeting, before we adjourn, we should say, okay, uh, action item for next month, we need to visit this or visit that. So you've already got it there, and then when we get the agenda for next month, there it is, right there. We need to know that we've got to work on that.
Right, but what I'm trying to say is that it'll continue to be tabled unless I get some input, so that people do come prepared. So I would suggest, until the thirtieth, the recap, I would say, would be, uh, following up about this citizens' memorial day, if there will be, or there won't be, uh, whatever it's supposed to be, um, with you, that would be an action item with you. Now with the board, I would think that an action item would be, um, the resolutions for the parked vehicles and for the dog feces.
Agreed.
Um, I'm not sure if the board is just going to think about it, or if we're just going to let go of the, um, marijuana, the Albert County moratorium, or if that is going to be changed to, uh, an item that we vote on next month. There was real, no clear direction there, so I would need an action item from the board so I can look for that. Um, and then the Cowboy, uh, sponsorship, we already discussed, we would do that on Thursday.
Yeah.
Sound good?
Okay, move that, uh, motion to.